But ma'am, but ma'am, there's a full pack right there that this other table has. Why don't you ask them and she goes, I couldn't. I thought that I could ask you, but you know.
So did you ask the other table?
She did not. I think she's been thrown out of asking. That's what I was told later.
Calling the meeting to order. Board of Commissioners, Mayor of the Board of Commissions of the City of Enid, Trustees of Enid, Municipal Authority, a public trust, the Trustees of Enid Economic Development Authority, a public trust and trustees of Enid Public Transportation Authority, a public trust. Notice is hereby given that the Mayor of the Board of Commissions of Enid, City of Oklahoma, the Trustees of the Enid Municipal Authority and Public Trust, the Trust of Enid Economic Development Authority, a public trust, and the Enid Public Transportation Authority, a public trust, will meet in the regular sessions at 5:00 PM on the 5th day of September 2019 in the lower level conference room of the city administration building located at 401 West Orange Garrett Road in said city. An agenda for said meeting is as follow. The agenda for this eve- this evening, regular study session agenda. We call this meeting to order. Is there, um, on number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any items of concern on the regular session agenda of September 5th, 2019. Does anyone have any comments or anything you'd like to discuss?
I've got a couple just real quick questions. On the claims list, when it gets down to the water project where it talks about damages, will you just clarify that for me? Is that, are we paying for easement and then, and then any damages that we do?
Yes, we're paying $120 a rod for a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement. And then we're also paying for damages. So if we damage crops or fences or et cetera. Chris, do you want to elaborate more on what we're doing?
Uh, yes, you know, we've, we've taken the approach that we would go and visit with these property owners and pay for the easements right up front at that meeting. If they accept the easements, we'll calculate damages and provide that check as well with the intent that we'll cover most everything that we expect to see during construction. I'm not crazy enough to believe that there won't be exceptions because you find stuff when you dig around here. And there'll be other things that we will probably have to pay for.
Okay, alright, that's, that's what I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure.
It's the process we chose to take.
Okay, alright. And then my other question was, um, on down in the agenda where it talks about the software that we're buying for $69,000, $59,000 for the billing? What? And I understand that it's probably time to update that, but can you just give us an update of what the new billing system will be able to do? Will it have other functions other than, or do you want to wait till a later date?
No, we do it right now. In fact, it's a great opportunity for our Assistant City Manager, Scott Morris, to come forward. He has already prepared and he's got a little presentation too and uh, he can answer your question for that.
The item is really, it's billing software.
Okay.
To help us sort our mail into batches. We send out about 25,000 pieces of mail every month. And instead of paying that 50 cents per letter, if we use the USPS bulk rate way of doing things, then it's only 38 cents. And so our savings is like $3,000 a month if we can sort our mail. And what it does is, um, instead of printing it in the order that we bill it, it'll totally print it out so that it can be put into batches that the USPS can use. So it's already kind of set up that they go, okay, this is your route, this is for your truck. So it helps them to sort it all. And, uh, not only does it, is it gonna, I mean, $69,000 is a lot of money. This software came in at more money than I think we thought it was gonna be. But at $3,000 a month, we recover our investment in less than two years. And the $69,000 actually covers the product plus five years of all of the, um, regular maintenance fees, I guess you would call it. So we, we won't owe any more pennies for five more years on this. And then it's just a maintenance fee after that. And so it, it, we get the, the discount for the bulk. And it also gives us some other abilities that are really good to have, like, uh, we can, we can totally customize how the bill looks, front and back. So we can put our own messages on the back. We can't do that through the billing, um, the regular software we have. This is sort of the interface to let us customize the back of it and even the front. You know, if we want to put a graph here, if we want the City of Enid logo here, if we want the bill to have a certain layout, this is sort of a mechanism where we can do that. And, um, the, the, the software system that we had before was, was put in in 2008. And it is running out of support. So at December 31st of this year, that system will no longer be supported. And since we're already making a change with our software, this was the time to go ahead and do it. So that's, that's what this item is all about. So.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Be it?
Alright.
Alright.
Third item on the agenda tonight, discuss bridge inspections findings.
Thank you, sir. Actually, we appreciate this opportunity to give you a small peek into what we do. But I will tell you right now, I've got the best staff in the city. These guys are bright, they're tenacious, and they make it look easy. Engineers, city engineers, construction inspectors. They make sure we get what we ask for. And with Marali's leadership, it's just, like I said, it makes it look easy. And we have some really good construction firms in this town, in case you didn't know it. Uh, some of the work that you're going to be seeing, showing, being shown today is done by our local companies. They work with us and they help us when we're in a tight schedule. And so we really appreciate, you know, those companies like Lorenz Construction, Cummins Construction, Luck and Bill on the waterline sewer lines. They, they're here local and they really give us a hand when we get into a tight spot. And we've been very impressed with the construction of Haskell Lemons. Very happy with what they've been done to date on, on Leona Mitchell. And we'll talk about that as well. Marali?
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners and City Manager. This is a brief introduction, uh, brief status of transportation projects. Overview, we're going to talk about bridge inspections and bridge projects, federal urban aid and state projects and local and arterial state projects. Every two years, we inspect about, like, uh, state inspects, uh, 76 bridges. Their spans 7, 20 feet, uh, in the span. With the help of ODOT, all these bridges will be inspected. This year, uh, we have five critical findings. We'll talk about, uh, one on Broadway, couple on Market and couple on Grand. On Broadway, Broadway and 5th Street. So this is the, this is the sou- southern end of this box structure right here. There is a critical failure of the beam. And we got exposed steel and this is a structurally unstable. Yep, so currently the traffic is being diverted away from the beam. So it's been narrowed here and while we are developing for the permanent solution. The second one, it's on Market, just east of 30th Street. So you can see right here, this is the box structure. The inlet and outlet structure of the, of the, sorry, inlet and outlet flow lines are not in the elevation of the flow, uh, flow line of the creek. So that's creating a scar of the structure. So it will be eliminated by putting some reprep. Next structure is on Market and 78th Street, just east, west of 78th. This is the inlet side of the box. It's been undermined with the flow and.
Marali, did dirt used to come up to the level where that yellow line is?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, and so dirt's been washed out?
Washed out, yes, with the flows.
And if dirt continues to be eroded out, then that undermines that whole thing?
Undermines more, yes. So, um, that's been done, like, adding more, uh, reprep and dirt. And there is a gap between the curtain wall and the beam, the floor. So that needs to be fixed, adding concrete. And on Grand Avenue, uh, this is the, uh, train overpass. We got two turnarounds, one is north and one is south. On the north side, the concrete is falling off. So, uh, requires to be, uh, cleaned up, all the loose concrete and fix, uh, fill it up. On the south bound, the beam, uh, the bearing, the supports, the beam is being displaced. So that requires to be, uh, fixed back. Randolph near 5th Street. This is, this is not part of this year. This was last year and it was required as a maintenance. And, uh, when we had a hash, um, access hatch to inspect that location and it found a deficiency and it doesn't provide a structural stability. So, and, uh, currently this has been under design. So, so far we completed 30% design. And the final design will be in mid-November. We're expected to go on construction early next year.
How long's it gonna take to reconstruct?
Typically, we give the contractor to bid the contract time, um, somewhere between 9 to 12, 9 to 12 months. I mean, it might be earlier, but, I mean, we can expedite it by putting contract time. In the past, we have seen when we put the contract time, it comes up higher in the bid prices. So we are giving contractor an ability to bid the contract time.
We need to make sure that when that gets down to Walker Street, which has taken all this additional traffic, it's getting beat to hell. If it's gonna be shut down for another year, Walker's gonna be in even worse shape. It's only one block of it.
Walkers to the west?
Yeah, Walkers, one block to the, the west. Everybody's diverting off Randolph to get to 4th Street, going up Walker and then up Maple. Maple's in great shape, I mean, you could drag, you know, a tank on Maple. But that one block of Walker is already in horrible condition. And after another year of this, it's gonna be dicey.
Currently, the extent of the project is almost like, right here, you can see, we are going all the way to the buildings because there are a couple sinkholes right here. And we are also considering, like, there is a sinkhole right here to this corner, northwest corner. So we are considering, and also the tight radiuses that needs to be fixed.
But not too far up further north?
Yes, sir.
Nice.
Marali, who, who does all the inspections? Is it the engineers for the City of Enid or is it ODOT or?
Uh, depend upon the project, like.
On, on the bridges and, cause I notice, you know, ODOT does a lot of the highway stuff and then the bridge, all over the overpass?
The ODOT inspection program that we do every two years that's done by the ODOT contractors, done by the engineers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you say it's sinking, is that, is that, isn't there a drainage that goes underground there?
Yes, sir, there is a eight by 10 colored, like, box colored. It goes from, uh, I don't have the big picture, but, uh, like, there is a park, I think, uh.
Exchange.
Yeah, Exchange Park. It starts from the park all the way to, like.
Right now, if you stand at the corner of the intersection with the flashlight, there's the whole about that big round, you can see right down into it.
We bought the, that was where the Senior Citizen Center was back in the day. And we bought that so that if anything ever happened there, we wouldn't have to do anything else. So clearly, now we're having to do something.
Well, we're having to do something where, where the road's over the top of it.
Right.
We have Uriah Nichols from ODOT. He's the Bridge Inspector, uh, Bridge Manager for the Division Four. You want to say something?
Yeah, Rodney, come on up, we want to, we want to hear from you. Tell the Commissioner what you do.
Bear a bad news.
So my name is Uriah Nichols, I'm the Field Bridge Engineer for Division Four at ODOT. Division Four is from Oklahoma City essentially up to the state line of Kansas. I oversee the bridge inspections that happen, both what we call on system and off system. Those on system are state on bridge, off system are county and city on bridges. So we have consultants that inspect all the off system bridges. We have our own inspectors that inspect the on system bridges. So the inspector that's inspecting these bridges recently is Burgess and Nyepel. They're one of the best inspectors nationwide, as far as I'm concerned. If you have any questions, I think Mr. Marali has done a fine job of explaining the conditions of these bridges that we have critical findings on. But if you have any questions about anything, I'm happy to answer what I can.
Yes, is the city taking all the actions that ODOT feels is necessary to protect the public at this time?
Currently, from, I talked to Mr. Gudansky and I think he is doing a fine job of managing the situation. He has already taken care of a couple of the bridges. And, um, a couple of them, we're still discussing what's gonna happen with them. But currently, I think we're in good shape.
Can you help pay for them, please?
I wish, I wish I could, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is on Leonel Mitchell Bridge. That's the location of the bridge, and it's on Leonel Mitchell, uh, just south of Orange Garrett Road. The construction of the deck is completed. And, uh, to, uh, currently they are working on the approaches. This substructure they are working on, uh, doing this falling concrete and stuff like that. The contractor is Leon, uh, Haskell Lemon. And they are way ahead of their contract time. Like, they are doing pretty good on the contract. This is as of August, haven't even put the numbers as of September. So they are way ahead of the construction.
What is the anticipated completion timeframe?
Uh, they got 180 days to complete the project, um, so.
From today, roughly?
Uh, from today, roughly got two more months.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Before Christmas?
Yeah. Willow Box is the location of the box structure, just south of Prairie View Elementary School. Same contractor is, uh, Lorenz Construction. And, uh, they are also way ahead of their work on their contract. Currently, they are like, uh, 70% complete compared to 60% what they need to do. The deck is poured, um, they're, they're working on the wing walls. The base is floored, uh, just, uh, the remaining portion is, uh, just the approaches. So they'll be pretty good.
You think that'll be open by October or?
They are working diligently, sir.
Chris, have you trained him?
I don't know what you're talking about, sir.
The other box is on Breckenridge, uh, just east of 30th Street. This, this structure was, uh, uh, the result of the last year inspections. And the wing walls were settling. And, uh, they, uh, it was a maintenance project. So the, uh, piers were installed to support for the settlement. Yes, the maintenance project, and this has been completed as of today.
How deep are those piers, do you?
Uh, they go to bedrock. So sometimes it depends on the location, right here, it's, I think, 20 feet.
Thank Ram Jack. For a bridge.
Uh, the next subject is federal and state projects. We got four projects currently under construction. Cleveland and Chestnut Intersection and Cleveland Boulevard, Cleveland Street. This is not under construction, we are working on final stage of design. And 81 Overpass or BNSF. The location of the project, you might have seen several times now. Current status, we have conflicts with AT&amp;T. Current status is, uh, by September 12th, they will be out of, uh, they'll be relocated by splicing their 900 cable. So, um, currently estimation is a fall 2019 completion date.
I was told that that 900 pair cable through there was supposed to be buried at six feet and it's only at three feet or something along that line?
Three or four feet, yes, sir.
They almost cut it?
Yeah. Whenever they bore it, it's hard to find out where they are. Cleveland Street from Railroad to Willow. Design is 90% complete. And, uh, we have two, uh, we have an, uh, a random amendment, a waterline amendment. They're working on the design. There is a new amendment coming into your, uh, in the near future for the right of acquisition. Uh, we are working on the scope and fee right now. It will be presented to you in the, in the next commission meetings.
Have we figured out what to do with the railroad track crossing itself at this point?
As far as drainage under it or?
No, I mean, just the, I mean, my, my last memory is that we were a little unsure as to how we were going to widen the crossing across the railroad. There was some issue with the railroad, like, well, if you build a loop around it, you could do the construction. They weren't being particularly cooperative. Have we figured out, is there gonna be a problem actually?
I do not think we have a problem.
Currently, the plans are, uh, the plans are about 90% and the railroad has seen the, the crossing design and everything. I can't remember if they've exactly approved it, but I know they're in the process of approving it.
Wasn't there something about they wouldn't allow us to shut down that line for more than some ridiculous short period?
That had to do with putting in box options for steel, I believe, versus pipes and stuff. I don't know if we resolved that.
But we're, we're okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, great.
And, uh, currently we are working on the stormwater drainage, drainage, uh, turning around how the, everything is gonna work on that. And the NEPA is being reviewed by ODOT and they are updating the records. Next project is, uh, this is a state project, 81 War, uh, BNSF Railroad. Here, there is an 18-inch water line on Oak and 81. This 18-inch water line is a two feet below road. We got only 24 inches cover. And, uh, currently the ODOT, uh, standard is, uh, about 20 inches, their concrete pavement and 8 inches base. So they will be in conflict with our water line. So that needs to be relocated. So this is the relocation plan right now. And we are going to relocate this 18-inch line. And this is going to be another 10-inch line going underneath all the structures. Uh, because there is a big storm drainage structure right here. And there are valves and hydrants, they will be in the way for the radius. So that's gonna be relocated part of that line.
Does ODOT pay for that or do we?
City's gonna do that.
How long is this construction like that gonna take?
Currently, we are working on, so like, uh, probably three to six weeks.
And I think the way that it's, the project's going, I don't think that's going to, uh, delay the project, right? Because other work can happen while this is happening?
Happening, yeah. We are working diligently to see, not to delay anymore with the ODOT project. But, uh, there are some items like 18-inch valves, they are on a lead time. So we are hoping we can get it sooner, so. Yeah, while under construction, we have conflict with water line. The next widening, uh, RTL widening project is Garland and Randolph. Uh, this is a last year funded project. Design is 90% complete and waterline relocation plans are 60% complete. This year, we got another project from, uh, intersection from, uh, just south of the intersection to, uh, Garrett Road on Garland. Uh, we are working on a form with, uh, to get a, uh, scope and fees. So in the next couple of meetings, we'll be presenting further. Local streets, this is a different, uh, next subject. These are all 2017, Indiana, Harvard and 12th Street. They were designed in 2017. In 2018, the waterline's been relocated. In 2018, um, the cut, work has been done. In Kennedy Street, uh, 2018, the design was done, waterline in 19. Right now, they are waiting for construction. Just before and after pictures, this is the location of Indiana Drive, Indiana Avenue, Jefferson and Adams. This is the before picture, after. Yeah, the work been done by a local contractor, uh, Lorenz, they do pristine work. Harvard Avenue, Jackson Street, to Midway, before and after. Chestnut, uh, 12th Street, between Walnut and Chestnut, before and after. Yeah, there are some waterline, this part of this project is waterline relocation and also the street construction, so. Kennedy, uh, from Hemlock to Ash. The waterline is complete. The contractor is pulled from this project to finish the Willow project, Willow Box. So as soon as Willow Box is completed, he will be back to finish this project. And, uh, these are last year projects. We got three design projects, May, East Maple, West Maple and Oklahoma. The location, uh, East Ma- West Maple and West Oklahoma, the plans are complete. Relocation plans, water lines, so they will be, uh, going out for bid pretty soon. Uh, East Maple Project, there, there are like 30% plans are completed so far. This is the location of the East West Maple, between Washington and Independence. There is a tunnel right here, so that is a complexity of this project. That is an eight-feet tunnel, right, or seven-feet tunnel? People can walk from top, north to south buildings. And Oklahoma Avenue, uh, but in Washington and Independence. This should be pretty straightforward project. There is no waterline relocation here. And East Ma- East Maple, from 10th Street to 16th. This is a, uh, tough project. Uh, we got, uh, very tight right away. Uh, there is a lot of, uh, elevation difference between the road and the houses. Um, there is ADA challenges. So we are working with, uh, the engineer to solve those problems. There is a waterline in the middle of the street, storm sewer in the middle of the street. So we are working to solve those problems.
So Marali, on, on these projects, um, will sidewalks automatically be placed in as well as the street repaired?
That's correct, yep. Whenever we do the complete reconstruction, we do it.
And all the approaches?
All the approaches, yes.
That's a lot of money.
Yep.
Worst four blocks in Enid.
Part of why it's the worst is because the sewer line, the water line inside the street has been repaired thousands of times. And I think it's also, it was concrete street, they had a, um, asphalt overlay at one time?
Something like, yes.
It's worn off in most places? Does the sewer line get replaced also? It gets, yes, when it moved, it's moved, right, Marali?
Not this sanitary sewer, storm sewer will be, like, yeah. We'll inspect under, uh, wherever the problem area is, we'll, uh, fix that area. We are not going to relocate it, it's gonna be in the same spot. But it's gonna be re, like, rehabbed. East Broadway, uh, 16th to University, this is a before picture and after picture. Uh, this is another local contractor, Cummins Construction, they did a fantastic job on resurfacing project.
What's the lifespan of this road surface?
Uh, typically asphalt starts 17 and a half years.
I'm gonna round up to 18, because that's what Robert Head always did, 18 years. And we'll probably, we'll probably get a few extra years out of it. You, you are gonna show, we're also working on the end there, University between Randolph and Maine, I know that's.
Yes, sir, I haven't finished, I got a few more slides. I'm sorry.
Let's go to plan.
Good.
Broadway Avenue, uh, from Washington to, uh, Van Buren. The design is complete, um, it's out, it's already, we got the bits and the construction starts end of September. Randolph, from Washington to 7th Street. Um, this is another project, uh, design project this year for arterial. We are working with an AE, uh, for a scope and fees. So we'll come back to you pretty soon for our award next Q. These are like last year projects. This is a ADM's turning lane and, uh, design is complete. This is another local contractor, he's waiting on finishing the soccer, uh, ball fields on Crossland Park. Once he finished the parking lot, he's gonna mobilize to fix this. And, uh, University, so this is, uh, another, uh, project in this year. So it's gonna be in-house design. East Randolph, from, from the box all the way to Thirtieth Street. This is another design project this year. This requires, there is a water line under the street that need to be relocated.
Is this where we did that patch last year? This year?
Yes. East Randolph, yep. So total, we got twenty-three projects currently on transportation. Just they finished eight projects under construction. There are ten projects under design. So this just the transportation side. We have not even touched any water, sewer, or storm sewer drainage projects. Do you have any questions?
Do we, do we post anywhere online what our current and projected projects are so that people in the community can look to see whether or not their street or is going to be affected any time in the near future?
In the website, there are like, all the arterial projects are being posted, major projects, not the locals. I can confirm it.
We'll beef up that, because that is one of the most important things that I hear about anyway, the streets. So, Scott, that'd be one of the things we want to make sure that we publicize somewhere, what streets we're doing, what's our next. I know we've been trying to do it quite a bit on social media. I've seen a lot of posts about streets, we're working on streets that are coming. And we'll keep on trying to do that.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marali. Item five, discuss asphalt maintenance update, I believe that's Everett.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Gerald. It's been about a year and a half since we started on these kind of projects, and we got the equipment to do it. So we want to kind of give you an update what we're going. You got me loaded, Julie? Thank you. The things we look at when we go to pick our streets out, we look at our roads that are prioritized by rail service base and citizen concerns. We get a lot of concerns about the roads and stuff that we can repair. We want to reduce the number of potholes. Of course, that makes it more efficient for us, where we don't have to run out every day and do potholes on these streets. We help reduce safety concerns, torque claims. We get a few of those because people run in potholes and tearing their tires up and stuff. We want a better railway service, and we save on major repairs in the future. And we're trying to prolong the rail service by seven or eight years. So we're gonna discuss our crack sealing process first. Since we've got a crack seal machine, it's been about a year and a half. Up on top is what we've completed. Sixteen from Broadway to Garrett, Grand from Willow to Garrett, Independence from Garrett Road to Willow Avenue, Main from Johnson Street to Van Buren, Oakwood Road from Willow Avenue to Indian Drive, Randolph Sixteenth to Thirtieth, Oxford from Cleveland to Van Buren, Main from Sixteenth to Twenty-seventh, and Nicholas Oaks, the whole housing addition, we've done in the last year and a half. Which is pretty impressive, since most of our guys really didn't know how to crack seal when we started. So they've learned a lot in the last year and a half and really moving on.
We brought the crack sealing program back in-house. We used to bid this out one time a year. We get so many streets. We got the equipment now. We got people dedicated doing it. And we're making significant progress. You want to talk about why it's important to try and crack seal to prolong the lives?
Right. On the crack sealing part, we're trying to get to the roads where we don't have to go in and do a total reconstruction on them, because it'll preserve, it'll keep the water moisture from getting underneath the ground, causing sub-bait problems and all that. So that's why we're doing it. Crack sealing in progress right now, fifty-fourth Street, south of Highway four-twelve, Arrow Road. We're going back and forth over there in between what we're trying to get done with the weather and stuff like that. And we're also in the Brookside Housing Edition, trying to lock that whole section out. And we're about eighty percent done over there. Crack seal priority list that we got coming up is Tenth Street from Willow Road to Main, Sixteenth Street from Chestnut Avenue Randolph, Worthing Street from Main to Avenue to Garrett Road, Garrett Road from Garrett Road to Route, and James Avenue from Van Buren to Railroad Crossing. So that'll keep and get a lot of vegetation out of our streets and help protect them a little bit. And here's just some of the pictures that we did, Grand from Garrett to Willow, Sixteenth Street from Broadway to Garrett. A lot of these had grass grown up, almost looked like a yard when we started these projects, so.
So you might talk through the process too, when they go out there, they have to clear some of that and?
Right. When we go out there, we have to have a grinding wheel to grind all the dirt and grass and stuff up out of the wheels. We V them off where, when we put the cracks in, it actually settles down into the road and seals it off really good. Fifty-fourth. We did this at night. It's down, close to downtown. We didn't want to stay out of people's way and traffic, so we did some of our projects at nighttime. Nicholas Oaks, that was a big help back through there. It's gonna be in good shape for a while in that neighborhood. Brookside.
Have we tried to project if we've saved any money by not contracting that out? If so, I mean, what do you think we've saved at all? And? That's a good question. I know I specifically haven't looked at that, so I don't know. Aaron may have some thoughts. Overall, I think over time, we'll save money because I think we can get more done. But we could specifically try to look at some of that. We've done it before on trails, whether we do it in-house or not. I don't know. Aaron, I don't think you specifically looked at that.
Yeah, and I haven't either.
They would be tracking time, because these guys aren't doing cracks all the time. And so we would have to start from a point and go forward to be able to nail down that number for you.
And I would expect you're doing more now than if we were just contracting, right?
Exactly. Right, the next is our asphalt streets, where we're going in and doing a surface repair. You can see how bad this street was up on top. This was one of our streets that we demoed when we got our new asphalt machine. And believe it me, it was a chore at first to learn this thing. But it turned out really good. And you can see as we go along, this is East Maple. This was our second one, so we still kind of knew at it, and we'd learned some different ways of doing it as we moved along. And as we move along, Turn Third and Maple again, and Randolph. There's Cambridge over by, plants are plenty. You can see how it turned out. Almost looks like a brand-new road over there. This, this lasted a while, and it really improved. And you can see some of the roads that we're dealing with. Most of them look like this right here.
Everett, how thick is the asphalt that you put down?
We're running a layer, inch and a half to two inch first on eleven base, and then we come back with two inches on top.
The life expectancy?
And I do, I do got the cost on this. We've been averaging about ten thousand dollars a block, which is really, really good on the prices.
The life expectancy, we're trying to prolong the life five, eight years. Obviously, this is an effort to try and improve the streets at a lesser cost, extend the life. Total rebuild on that street would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. For ten thousand or twenty thousand, we can do this. It's a better, it's not a perfect surface, but it's a better driving surface. I think the citizens can recognize it's much better. We'll get better results and we can get more done. So that, it's not perfect. It's not, I know I've seen a lot of comments on social media about this, you know, you're not fixing the base, you're not doing. We're not intending to try and fix the base. If we try to fix the base, you guys know what happens. It has to get put on a list. It could be years away. It costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is a way to get some relief now. Hopefully, it's a better driving surface. This particular service, surface is up to fairgrounds and?
Yeah, this is Grand, turning rock all in Oxford.
From start to finish, for a project like that, for, as I say, an average block size, how long does it take to finish?
We're average, this here, this project right here takes two weeks. That's going in, we want to make sure the drainage is right, and everything gets cleaned up, all the edges get cut back. And then we put the, fix all the potholes, put the asphalt down. So it's taken about two weeks. This is out by, on, off of Cary Road, right beside Chisholm High School. I don't know if you guys have been down, out there, but they have a lot of traffic through football season, and that road was horrible. So they're really happy now they got a good road to get to their stadium here. This is just a letter I threw in there to Mr. Steve Barnes, and it's from the Expo Center, that he was really impressed what we did out on, on Grand there to get him through the Expo Center. So he was really happy. Future asphalt projects, this is what we got coming up that's on our list. Nineteenth Street, Locust to Burks, there's three blocks there. North Grant, Seventeenth from Garrett to Park, Fifteenth from Garrett to Main, Fourteenth from Garrett to Main, Ninth Park from Garrett to Park, East Broadway from Twenty-sixth to Twenty-seventh, Twenty-seventh from Main to Broadway. These here, the Burke from Second to Kennedy Poplar, that's over by Candy, where we're fixing to reconstruct that. All the roads come to it are streets that we're going to do to improve that whole neighborhood, go along like that project. So we'll jump in right when they get done with that.
Now, are these posted online as well for people to see that this is?
These may not be. These may not be, this is, this is an area we could do more, because this shows, this shows that we're doing a lot more, because we really are. You might emphasize again, Everett, as we're going through this, these are just asphalt streets, right?
Right. These asphalt streets with no curbs and gutters is what we're attacking first. And that'll be at the end too. It'll show you how many streets are actually left that we got to do with no curb and gutter. You guys would be probably really surprised, because I was. Here's some of the streets that I just said that we're gonna do. You can see what they look like. And maybe in the future, we can come back and show you what they're gonna look like when we're done with them. Fourteenth, they're pretty, pretty bad shape. Fifteenth Street. A lot of these are coming off of Gary too, so when the people are coming into town, they're gonna be able to look down our streets now. They're gonna be improved, and it's gonna look, look pretty impressive. Seventeenth Street.
The equipment that you have, is it capable of doing the streets that have curbs and gutters?
It is, but I don't have the, the right machinery to go in and actually grind them down and do the service and do that kind of stuff. All I have is the asphalt machine.
You can't, you can't just build a street that has curb and gutter, so that's a little less of the drainage.
Right.
And the machine, it doesn't do curbs, I don't think.
No.
It's, so that's why the specific criteria is we have a never-ending supply. It seems like of streets like this. And you can see, if you go back and show some of those other photos with the streets, Oakwood or, yeah, Oakwood and Grand and Cambridge, it'll look pretty much like that. Is it perfectly smooth? No. But it's much better. It's got nice striping on it, and it looks good. And it's better than this.
Here's East Broadway. This is over by the college. A lot of, they got a lot of softball games over, so we want to get this all taken care of around that area there. Same thing around the college area on the backside. Burke Street from Second to Kennedy, another one over there where they're gonna do that work on Kennedy. I mean, you can see all these streets are in terrible, horrible shape, right? But we'll get them fixed up where they look really good like the other ones you just saw. Jared from Third to Fourth. Third Street from Hemlock to Cedar. All of these, we are planning to get done this year, because we're out there. So if we can do that, it'll be quite a, quite a difference in town.
You mean by June, right?
Yes, by June, yes. Willow between Go and Wheat Ridge, this is the mile stretch that goes out of town. But a lot of our customers, we got a lot of traffic that runs down that road, and we're out there all the time patching potholes.
How, how does this, I mean, there's a little more heavier traffic on Willow out here between Garland and Wheat Ridge. I mean, my impression is that heavier trucks kind of tear the hell out of this asphalt. How well does this repair do when it, when you got, you know?
But right now, all we got is a chip seal out there, so it's like, negative means thick out there. So when we put it to, I'll probably go up a little bit higher and thicker on this asphalt to hold it up. So is, is it gonna hold up like a concrete street? No, it won't, but.
And this, this will give us a good indication on the life expectancy.
Right.
Because that is the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I mean, these neighborhood roads, I imagine we actually get good life out of it. But there, especially at the intersections, I mean, it's the turning of the heavy truck that really tears it up, right?
Yep.
And we're gonna have to go in and redo an intersection every year.
That's, I can't tell you that.
Yeah.
But what this will tell us is this will be our, one of our test locations, on how well this is really gonna, gonna?
Right.
Because in the past, we did chip and seal.
Which we got a good sub-bait out here, we just don't got a good pavement service.
And if you can find a way to keep the water out of the sub-bait, you can survive.
Right.
And with this program, we stay away from intersections too?
Yes, we do.
It's, it's the street in between, renovating the street.
So there's probably seventy-five miles of railways with the CD with no curbs and gutters. I don't know if everybody recognized that, but when I went back to my list, that's how many we actually have. So we're gonna be busy for a while just working on these streets to improve. And if we get this far, we're gonna be really looking good. Any questions?
All the materials that we use, do we purchase them from out of town, or is there anyone that we purchase them from?
No, all the asphalt's being about right here at Cummins Construction. Any other questions?
That's a good job.
Well, I appreciate the efforts of Public Works in doing this. It's, it's magnifying the efforts. He, he touched on an important point. You saw in Marali's presentation, Kennedy Street. It's gonna be several blocks. That's gonna be done. If we could do it that way everywhere, that'd be the way to do it. It'll be concrete, it'll have sidewalks, it'll be perfect. The side streets are terrible. He's taking care of some of the side streets that will look like the example from Oakwood, so it won't be perfect, but it'll be a lot better. So, and we're not gonna run out of streets to work on, I know, because if we did, we'd have to start over on this program.
Right.
Thank you, Everett. Any other comments? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for watching the ENA Television Network broadcast of the ENA City Council Study Session. Replays of the meeting will air on Channel twelve and one-twelve, including a live stream of the meeting at enatv.org.